Everybody. Heavenly Father, we thank you so much. Lord, you just are all to us this morning. Truly, you are the great I am. Lord, we pray for all the violence that's happened across the United States of America. We pray for the family, especially them two little kids and that grieving widow. Lord, we don't understand, but we know you do. But we pray for peace, Lord, because you the only one that can bring peace across this nation. And, Lord, we humbly ask for that peace this state. Lord, bless these elected officials that you bestowed upon these great positions to do the betterment of this county. We ask that ever deliberation of the board and the public be in a friendly and a oppressed situation, Lord, but let us do what's best for this county when it's all said and done. Lord, we thank you for giving your son on the cross for our salvation. In Jesus' name we pray, and all of God's children say amen. Salute pledge.
May the leaders do the life of the United States of America, and continue the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Like work for everybody this morning? Oh, well, go ahead, Mr. Sorey. The first time, adoptee to any additions or deletions.
Chairman, I have one that said we discovered our leases on our readers are coming up in February. I'd like to add another great release, but if you would allow this morning so Andy should get it so we can get back to work, could we?
Give me a break. We're going.
Chairman, could I want you to make sure your microphones are close enough where we can hear? I'm having a hard time. I'm right here off the front. I'm having a hard time hearing you. Sorry. How about you? That's a little better. I know you're soft spoken. We forgive you for that.
All right. I had one of the leashes, the due behavior task force. All right. County engineer.
County engineer.
Mr. Chairman, would you give it out under the joint resolution? Development commission. Or whenever you want to stick by.
Put it on you.
Yes, that's okay.
Do you have any more?
Yes, Mr. Chairman, I'd like to add two items. We had discussed this before, attorney contract is one. The second one is adoption script for county coordinator, county manager. Something I want to add to it. Those are some of the two items I had.
All right, can you pay us? Do you have a motion to adopt the agenda?
I think.
I have a motion to second. Any discussion? Out of debate?
Yes.
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 Yes. All right, we have two meetings here, the regular session September 2nd, 2025, and the special session September 4th, 2025. Do you have motion approved, any comments?
Some of it.
Motion on floor, your second.
Second.
I have motion to second. Any discussion? Out of debate?
Yes.
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 Yep. All righty, we'll go to the non-agenda audience statement to give a statement, the common list.
Now, we've got some guests in the room. As y'all know, that is our state reverse 2013. For statute 286.0114, the mandate some members of the public shall have a reasonable opportunity to be heard before the board. And we just ask that you do that within three minutes.
All right, thank you. All right, we'll get started. Ms. Becky Marsh.
Come on in. Too loud in there. Good morning. I'm kind of the board of board in request for your signature and approval for us to complete the state application for our state library grant. We do this every year, and I'm asking for your permission for the chairman to sign our application so that we can submit that and be a part of that grant. It's been blessed in the past, and we've been approved every time, and we're hoping to be blessed again this time. If you don't mind approving for that signature, then I'll get on back to work.
I don't have. I'll go ahead and approve it. I'll make a motion as I think. But if you don't mind next time, just stick it in the agenda package instead of here fully. They will have record of it, but I'll make that motion.
She had asked for this page. She's got.
Oh, you.
Yeah, it's only me and my assistant working this morning, so she's had. I've had to close the library a moment ago to come here. So I asked for permission to go ahead and get back to the library.
I just didn't see a tab for you out there.
That's okay.
So I didn't see the. I didn't see it in the packet.
I have the information.
Okay, thank you. I'll make a motion.
Okay, thank you.
I have motion to second. Any discussion? Out of debate?
Yes.
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 Thank you all. I very much appreciate it.
Thank you, yes. Thank you for all you did.
All right, Ms. Reed. Reed.
Yeah.
She just.
They signed into you take all three of them.
Yeah. All right, I'll just do that.
They all with SEH.
All right.
Just going down all the SEH.
Yeah. All right, well, thank y'all. We'll go to Terry at the end.
All right, just signing in.
He just signed in.
Yeah, that's right. I'm here.
All right, we go to Mr. Harry Bell, tax collector.
Well, good morning.
Good morning, man.
It's a pleasure. It's a pleasure to be able to come before y'all and be able to get you visiting with you and see you. I apologize. I didn't get to be here, and I missed the opportunity to come and speak to you at the last meeting. But I wanted to make sure I got back very quickly and visited with y'all. And of course, as always, if you have any questions or anything you need to know, I'd be glad to answer those. Really quickly, I want to share with you exactly what I had sent to y'all back on August 22nd, 2025, in a letter addressed to the board of county commissioners. It says, "Commissioners, the Holmes County Board of County Commissioners and the Holmes County Tax Collector have had for the past four budget years a service partnership in that the Board of County Commissioners would fund the county-paid benefit amount of the health insurance of the employees of the Tax Collector Office. Holmes County citizens deserve and should receive the best service that is possible as the Holmes County Tax Collector. And as I'm sure, as the Holmes County Board of County Commissioner, this is what we always strive to produce. This essential partnership that we have supports the Tax Collector's Office. And what does it do? It maximizes the benefits to the employees in aid in recruiting and retention, and in turn maximizes the service to the Holmes County citizen. As you all are very aware, it's hard to keep good folks. You've experienced that yourself, and I have too. This type of significant service partnership exists now and has always existed with our neighboring counties of Washington and Jackson County, as well as the majority of counties throughout the state. In this current budget year, 2024-25, the county-paid benefit used in the Board of County Commission budget was for only four tax collector employees that needed the benefit. But as we discussed and was well understood at the time of budget last year, there could be a need for five, if that were possible. This is what is happening currently. Therefore, it is crucial that the board honor the service partnership agreement and fund the additional amount of $7,674.66 for the two remaining months in the 2024-2025 budget year. Also, it is imperative that the Board of County Commissioners continue to honor the service partnership agreement and return to the 25-26 Board of County Commission budget the health insurance county-paid benefit for the tax collector employees. This funding is a vital partnership to maximize the tax collector recruiting and retention of employees that in turn can maximize service to the citizens of Holmes County. Please allow this crucial service partnership to continue respectfully here in the middle of the Holmes County tax program. So I appreciate the time coming, relay that to you, speaking to you. I sent all of this, this, this letter to you, and I know y'all may have some questions and be glad to answer any of your time.
Have you thought about this during our last pledge at the meeting?
Thank you.
I'm off some of your.
Wilmer, you had mentioned putting it off to Harry. Come back to the next meeting.
Then, anyone just go do it to you?
Well, he said.
Yes, sir.
Did you get any surplus?
It's always tight, yes, sir. It's just, just like, just about every budget is in the county. It's always tight. Now, if you're talking about the two last ones in 24-25 budget, that was something that was, and Mr. Erickson said he didn't recall that. And that was, that was made back at the beginning of last year, and you were trying to find and cut where you could. That I told you I could go with four, and I had, for seven months, I had four employees. But it went to five. So five months of this last year have just been five employees. So that's where the increases occurred, past the budget amount of four. So that's why I was up here requesting that, and that's why I was in the letter. Now, it's always, always tight. Is there any surplus?
No surplus.
But it, you know, it's, it's something that every constitutional officer has to work with budget and has to make sure that they can get it in there. So that's, that's the purpose in it. The next year's budget. The first time I sent the budget into the county that they requested, the figure was, the figure was in there, and I came back as soon as the rates came out, and I dropped it to five employees, as well as using new retirement rates that came out of the state, which lowered the amount needed to by $13,029. So trying to help cut, trying to do that. This partnership has been ongoing for four years, four years. It's not new. I just want everybody to understand. It's not new. It just didn't come up this year. It hasn't created any kind of new load for the county. We've had this partnership for quite some time.
Hey, for next year's budget, you sent a, the request was essentially $59,603. But after talking to you the other day, you said that the number came down because of some reason, and you gave me another number prior to the last budget here. Do you remember where that number was?
Yes, I sure do.
What was that number?
That, the, back when I sent August 28th of '25, I sent the revised budget to y'all, and it came down to $53,716.
Why was, what was the change in that? I mean, what was the change in this?
This.
$5,064,000.
Sure. The change was when I put this in there. There, there potentially, there are seven total employees, if you believe myself. Six with aligned supervision. One of my employees, and that number I first gave you that you called out, was for six. Now, when there was needed a excess or to give some, to cut the budget some, that person is on state insurance with their tax. So it's not needed right now.
But unfortunately, I mean, unfortunately, that's the situation, but if they were leaving, you would have to offer that to somebody else, and there would be another $7,000 increase if that changes with the next budget year, correct?
Yes, that is correct. And that would be because if that person did not have insurance in some other form. So that's why initially it was in there. I always make sure that I put that in there. And then at any point in time, like we've done for the four past years, I had, end up having conversations with, you know, different people about what can be cut, what can be, what can be lower, and things like that, and we always come up, and usually I say, well, hey, I've got someone that's not needed right now. They're on state insurance, so we can lower that amount.
$53,716, that's, that's what you're requesting for next year for a total of five, right?
That is correct.
So what did we budget the pre, the prior year? What was the total amount we budgeted for those four?
For the prior year, yep, got it right here.
The, for the prior year, the amount was $39,736.
Now, the time we did that, that was still when the, when the interest, I mean, the insurance rates had not gone up. Now, they hit north a whole lot last budget year. So that number did not include that, but that's the number that was used in the budget.
So looking at this and just listening to what you're saying and looking at these budgetary numbers, what you're saying, you had a $53,716 increase on all five individuals. So we would be looking at a total of $53,716 plus the $39,736, and am I correct?
No, sir. That, that $39,736 was from the previous budget.
Yeah, but we've already, we should have already budgeted that into the 24-25 segment.
And it was, yes.
Okay, so then there would only be a difference between the 53 and 39 if that was the case.
No, it would be, well, sorry, you're saying an increase from last year?
Well, that's what I'm saying. You're looking at an increase of $53,716 total for the budget, and you're saying that that's for all four, all five individuals. But you, but you're also saying that we already budgeted the $39,736 for the previous year, so that money's already been budgeted. So my question is, in between those two numbers, that would be the increase of those five? Or where is the $53,716 coming? Is that, is that additional in top of $39,000?
No, 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 no. The, the, originally, at the $39,736, that was, the re, the refund thing was four.
Yeah, we budgeted that, correct?
So now this year, we, this is the insurance rate, just that I'm beginning with the increases, times five.
Okay, so that, so this, Angie, we never budgeted anything then for the insurance?
We eliminated it to, to, uh, next year's budget.
The total amount? Okay, that's what I was, that's where I thought it was. Okay. So what it boils down to, we did it previous year, but we eliminated it in the budget for next year. So we paid the insurance last year, but now due to the budgetary, and I got some other budgetary things coming up too on the corridor, or some other things that we eliminated that we did last year. But this is one of these situations that we eliminated. We budgeted last year, but never eliminated it total this year. Which it ain't that much difference. If you had $7,000 to 39, you only had $8,000 increase, and that's the number I was looking at. Yet you still $7,000 short for two months.
And that was based on 24-25, and only four, that was budgeting for four.
In this budget, in this budget here.
That's correct. Right now that we're in. And as I said, for seven months, I had four employees, but five of these months, I now have five. And we talked about that. That may come about, and it was well understood at the time of this, of that previous year.
I remember you come to the board, and I mentioned that to the board, that you come to the board, and we, the board at that time, budgeted your insurance for those four individuals, and you said there might be five. You might have to help us. But we did that throughout the year, which apparently, you know, we, now you're asking for it at the end of the year, which is no different. It's still, we're still helping. But since we budgeted it last year, this board's going to decide whether or not we're going to go back and budget it for next year.
Right.
That's strictly what.
But $7,000 would be for this year.
Yes, sir.
That is correct. That's, that's for the last two months of this budget year. Because now I have five, and that's what used up what was in your budget for four of them now. There was only an amount for four.
I, I, I feel like we need to go ahead and honor that, since we already did 24-25. So I make a motion that we take that out of contingency to pay that $7,000. What was it? Total number? I make a motion to take that out of the county commissioner contingency, since we'd already voted on that for last year for this year's budget, and we'll go ahead and honor that in this hour.
All right, I have a motion on the floor. Do you hear a second?
I'll say it.
All right, I have a motion to second. Any discussion? Out of debate?
Yes.
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 Now, for the next year, we're looking at, well, the $53,000.
That is correct.
$53,000. You want to table this to budget time, or like budget here, or do you want to discuss it now? Budget time?
Just to let you know, Mr. Erickson, that, that is the, the insurance rate for five for the full year.
For four year.
Yes, sir. And that's where that amount comes from. And that is normally, as I said, this will be the fifth year, as far as turning it in. The fifth year of turning it in, just like that, to, to the board.
I don't have a problem discussing it, Mr. Bell, and I appreciate you bringing that to the board.
Yes, sir.
But I, I think the most, the most proper way to be handling it, the 501 meeting Monday night during our budget for next year's budget, and that's our final hearing. Is the board okay with that?
That's fine.
But that, that'd be great. I appreciate it. I just wanted to make sure that I came. If you had any questions once or want to make sure, you know, I have an opinion to answer. And of course, it's always a pleasure to see y'all, and I appreciate that very much. Appreciate your assistance for this year, and appreciate everything for next year if possible. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you.
All right. Ms. Dickerson, at DCRC.
Yeah, on the agenda, it was just two additional items that needed to be added. So Bakari Dickerson, in the local regional council, I'm the new nominee. There were two items that were left off prior to my starting here. We were supposed to extend professional service agreement with the local regional council. It was supposed to be signed July 1st, and start until August. I'm catching up on previous items. It wasn't received by you all, so I did bring my laptop so I can get that over so it can be signed. And then in addition to that item, we also have some satisfactions of mortgages that needed to be submitted to the county.
Did we get them already?
I have them with me, yeah.
Um.
But I am on there for the annual report certification, yes.
Does those items have to be done today, or can we bring them up?
I can just email them to you as far as the professional service agreement, and then the mortgages, and you leave them with you.
Okay, well, yeah, we can have an energy. I just love having that stuff so I can go back and refer to it and have it.
Absolutely.
Yeah, just get with Jane there.
I'll do that.
Thank you.
Thank you.
For the other item she had.
All right. Brooke is signed, and if she's coming to the agenda, so we'll just take care of that when we get to them. All right. All right, we'll go to the agenda items.
Mr. Chairman.
Yeah.
I think you marked me up by mistake.
Oh, did I? No. Good.
I was on there about the third, named that, and the fourth named that.
I did. It was right in the middle of SCD, and I just, yeah.
I know what it was. You just didn't want me talking.
No, no, I just, I, I did do that.
There were several of them names.
And I just marked it.
I figured that's what happened. Richard Wilson, Happy Hall Road, thank you for giving me this opportunity. First off, I would like to appreciate the board and on their non-agenda audience statement, keeping that strict and concise and to the point, out of, directly out of statute 286.0114, which are other boards, legal bodies, municipal bodies, that add to that and try to intimidate speakers in what they're being allowed to say. So I do want to extend a thank you on keeping that strictly to the Florida statute and not interjecting anybody's personal opinions in there. The one thing I wanted to talk about today was matters of, of legal issue where there have been formal charges filed against people serving on boards that even though there are charges pending, that are in the process of working their way through the courts, we have individuals that remain active in those bodies, which are making decisions, voting on items that I don't think is appropriate for someone that has legal charges filed by the state and gets them for things that they have done within the duties of that board that they're serving on. I would appreciate it if the board would, would address that and do it appropriately. I mean, we're, we're missing one commissioner due to charges being filed, and the governor removing that individual, which is the proper way. And I think if the county has a board that has members serving on it that have legal charges filed from actions due to their direct job responsibilities that they're serving in, whether it be voluntary or that the county take and put them either on a suspended status, where they are not active until those charges are disposed, or some other ramification or, or resolution to that issue. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Oh, Chairman, I just got to ask, what's he referring to? Are you referring to the, the board, the boards outside of this board?
Board deputies?
Board acquaintees that serve on other boards.
Did we do a reorganization of that already? Or have we done a reorganization of those boards?
So those unions haven't been reorganized, and?
Yeah.
Yeah, I thought they have.
Yep. You should have got a copy of all of them.
I have a copy of that.
Oh, wow.
Oh, I thought you were talking about other commissioners.
Yes.
No, not commissioners. No, no. I'll use that as an example of someone that has, has been, has been removed from, from their position, suspended or removed, however you want to word it. We've got other people serving on other boards.
Okay, I get you.
That have charges filed, they're still serving.
I'm a little slow this morning. I thought you were referring to commissioners outside of this.
No, 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 no.
You're going to do that. Yep. Yeah. Yeah, you got all those Ds. I was like, well, we haven't been going to.
Oh, yeah, I can go to.
I feel like. You don't know where you're following behind.
I think if you, if you look over those unions, I think Chairman has one more than all of y'all. So I, I find it, it's pretty good.
I agree with you. I like Chairman not being here, so I know you got that one, so that would be good.
All right, well, go ahead. Yeah. All right, we do need to lose something up. David, let's start getting.
Yeah, what it is, I was asked to, our lease is coming up in February on the motorraders, two of them, and they're sporadic as they come in, and they're spread out through March. So I asked Andy to give y'all an update. I was asked to get hours and mileage in repair on dump trucks also. So y'all would have it for a budgetary final hearing. As y'all all know, everything goes up, and there's no control over that. But Andy's talked a little bit, and y'all may ask him some questions.
All right, Mr. Howard, how y'all doing this morning? I was bringing this before the board. We got eight graders that come up off the lease. I don't know if you guys want to continue leasing these or, should I lease some new ones? If you don't lease new ones, we need to have the time for them to get eight graders up, because they don't have them on a parking lot. They have to deal them. So it takes a while to deal eight graders. This is my question to you, Andy, on these graders. We budgeted what we currently have budgeted in the past for graders. I reached out to Zach with Dobbs yesterday. I appreciate you sending me that number. He reached out to his boss, and I, I just asked him for an instance. What happens if we keep these graders right here, the ones we currently have? He said everything would remain the same on the lease, other than certain things that might have to be looked at that have to be fixed, which I think you've been doing a good job keeping the maintenance up on tires and all that. You said $70,000 for new tires this year. So I asked him, and, and I think Angie got that number, but the greater leases was about $1,800, $2,000 a month that we're leasing each one of them for roughly. There's eight of them, so that's what we're looking at.
I think it's about $57,000 a year.
Yeah, so he said, if we keep what we got, he said, just, and this is for the board's information. If we keep what you got, you might be looking at a small percentage for cost of inflation cost and so forth. However, he said, if you want to go out for lease for new graders, it is going to be a lot different. He said it's going to be, it's going to be.
It's not the same way we had, Mr. Erickson, we had a great lease.
We had a great lease, he said, and you got a good lease, and if you keep what you got, they'll keep honoring it. They'll just go up a certain percentage. But if you go outside that lease and get a new lease, he said, it's going to be a significant amount difference. And I was like, well, the problem is, we didn't budget that. We didn't, we went off last year's budget. So after talking to him and talking to Zach yesterday, I really think we need as a, I mean, you guys tell me what you want, and Andy can probably get into it more on the details, but they cover everything, basically, the transmissions, all the major parts.
They, the wood transmission that did go out in different floors, greater, they did warranty that. They said they've never seen one happen like that or come apart like that, but they did warranty it. There's a lot of things they do warranty, but they, there's a lot that they don't. We got one addition to now that's the sensors or wiring harness, joystick or something going haywire with it. It's doing everything it wants to do. And I think Andy's got to shut it down, shut it off to get it quit, and then crank it back up and start over. But John Deere's supposed to have been there Friday, and I called him back yesterday. They were supposed to come out yesterday afternoon, so I don't know. They were supposed to come out yesterday afternoon, so I don't know, I don't know the outcome of that.
But those items that we're having a problem with, we're going to have to pay them. Whatever they warranty, we got to pay to get it fixed anyways before we turn them back in. So.
Everything that happens pretty much after the fifth year, we're going to have to pay. I think the warranty is going to be up.
So if we continue leasing these, we won't have warranty?
I don't think the warranty's going to, I have to check into that because I'm still waiting on the guy to call me back. He was supposed to, he gave me a paper, but I can't honor that paper because I got to get you another one, and I'm still waiting for him to do that. So this meeting got brought in before I got that paper.
So if we lease it, my understanding, talking to him, everything would stay the same, except what's not being bothered right now.
I'll check on the warranty. There's a lot of stuff that we're going to have to pay for, a lot of the sensors that getting knocked off on the lift cylinders. We got a lift cylinder in district two now that's bent, according to John Deere that we're going to have to replace. We had to replace the steering cylinder that got bent. I mean, you know, stuff like that, but I mean, that comes out of the tire, but we got to pay for it. All the tires we got to pay for, you know, stuff like that. I mean, we're at the 4,000 hours, we got one over $5,000. That's actually 5,500 hours on it. But every, at 4,000 hours, you get $1,000 worth of fuel that you have to change on every one of them. Yeah, that's $8,000. So that's not counting the foot, and everything we got to put in, the transmissions, the hydraulic, it's got to be changed. The valves got to be adjusted, all of that is $4,000. And we only have one that's not at 4,000 hours.
What year are we in here?
These are.
2021?
These are 21s, and they're, yeah, the five-year lease from the horse.
Yes, five-year lease. And we got some of them at different times.
But they're all still pretty good shape.
Oh, yeah, yeah, we get some hours on them, yeah, they're in good shape.
Does the board want Andy to find out information on the warranty before we do anything?
I think it'd be good for him to crunch those numbers because we don't want to pay more on maintenance than we would for an increase on a lease on a particular machine, you know, that he don't understand. Do you think he could have that a 5:01 or 5:00 Monday at the budget meeting?
I can give it a try. I can't guarantee him what they'll get me, but. Like I said, I was still waiting on him to give me the paper that you called and asked him about. So he never got back to me on that, the lease agreement and all that. The one he did get me on, it did honor us.
We need to really figure out what we need, and we'll put it in the budget.
Just bring it to the board, just have it across with budget.
Tell them about truck trucks.
Oh, the trucks.
What year?
Oh, we got 2018s and 2019s. The Macs are 18s, the Kenworks are 19s. The biggest one we had trouble with is that district two right now is, we got a Mac that's, we've done a lot of work too, and Macs had it twice, and they can't figure out what's wrong with it, but they're still charging us.
What's the mileage running on them?
Let's see, the mileage. We didn't get the mileage, we got the hours. District one, wait a minute, that's maintenance for district. We didn't get the mileage. Our copier's down, and we didn't get a lot of stuff. We had to send everything up here to get copies for it. But most of them's got right up in a thousand miles, just a little over 100,000 or less. So you're looking at the 2018 Macs. Biggest maintenance on them is tires and service them. We've got a lot of tires blowed out here lately, pretty good. The service is not that much on them, but the, the engine problem or the fuel problem on district two is the one we have a difficult to fix up there.
And you Mac them, fix that?
Well, they got it bad, yeah. They charge us $10,000 to get it fixed, and that didn't seem to fix the problem.
The thing now, if you sell them, you probably get a decent amount of money where if you sell them at 200,000, 100, you know, you get a pair a little higher, you're not going to get.
Yeah, yeah.
I mean, what's your opinion? Do you think if you're going to sell them, would be the time to do it, or wait until?
If you're going to sell them, then yeah, now the time to do it because the more miles you put on them, the less you're going to get for them. You know, we did have that, Kenworth's coming here and just want to give us, get us 10 trucks without any money down, and we sold the old ones to pay for them, but the board decided not to do that.
Mr. Erickson, I'd like for Andy, we could have it by budget time, but next year's budget, let him work with Truck Works. We might could work out a deal selling them trucks and maybe give them, do a, a lease. Well, you know, or say it on a bounty.
My only thing is, we got, and Mr. Stafford, Earl, you probably remember, we got in this situation way back when where those trucks weren't worth nothing, you couldn't like give them away.
Or we kept them too long.
Yeah, kept them too long, and that's what I'm worried about. You know, we don't want to get to that point where no one wants us.
Well, that was the object of getting the Kenworth, the tri-axle with all the perks and everything on it because we were going to trade them in every two years. We thought they would bring more money. We don't, as a county, we don't make a 20-yard dump, try, all we need is 18 yards.
But see, we didn't pay the full retail, you know, we got them on state contracts, so they got them cheaper than a county.
Yeah, I mean, that was, I mean, that was the thing, the county combined, had a cheap price to try and sell them with, didn't you? And that was the thing that was going to do, but it never got, I mean, we never.
We had a crash one time.
Well, the problem was, we ran into the availability for a new truck. They told us a year, you don't have till we get a new one in, that was the problem.
We're talking about new leases for the 25, 26 fiscal year? On what trucks?
On the old grader.
I don't.
Yeah, we just don't get some.
They don't get some.
What kind of budget we have?
Yeah, I like to look at those quotes, and I like to look and see what they were doing.
Let me get with, I can't think of his name, and see what, come down again, see what y'all, you think they'll bring our young trucks?
Yeah.
And then we'll see what Truck Works.
That's good, I think, Andy.
What was on the files?
Yeah.
And then we'll see.
Yeah, the difference.
Those are the problems with that, and then we'll have that.
Man, if you could do that, I would, I would much appreciate it.
I gave him a call, I can think of a plan, but I could start at the challenge and give him a call and come down and say. Yeah, you're an excavator.
Yeah, I'm going to talk about that a little bit later too, because I need to do that.
I mean, this, what, I only think 7,000 hours?
800.
Yeah. But there it is, if you want to keep it, keep leasing it.
Well, we got to dig dirt, and that's the problem. If we weren't digging dirt there, and our district was in another city. We weren't in another pit, we weren't having that excavator.
It's got 800 hours, and you're going to turn it in and turn a lease on another one that's got zero hours, which costs more money to lease.
I know, would that sense?
Any more questions, Frank?
Was that a five-year lease on that excavator, or three? It wasn't five years? Yeah, let me know on that too. You got the same down with Dave.
Yeah. But you had it five years and paying $100.
Thank you. All righty, well, there's the agenda items, the old sheriff's building, Larry Duke.
He hasn't made it yet, they're coming, but he hasn't made it yet.
All right, well, go on down there. Our border force service board, Mr. Brenner.
Good morning, commissioners, I'm Clint Brenner, the senior editor for the Forest Service for home and western counties. I believe y'all have completed the annual county commissioner board, and have a chance to review it. From the report, you can see we experienced 18 fires this year compared to 19 last year. Holmes County is currently at 650 compared to 278 last year on the dry and big, so they're going to be desert-like conditions. We're currently on a fire readiness level two, meaning some routine fires are anticipated. And the Forest Service has sent firefighters to help with wildfires in Idaho, Oregon, Texas, and Oklahoma. Y'all have any questions? If not, I'm looking forward to serving y'all for this next year.
With the fire threat, Holmes County, y'all looking at a burn ban?
Well, that, that we got it. That is something that commissioners, the burn ban.
Are we, any recommendations? Are we getting close to getting one, I guess?
It's drought right now, but like I said, we've got, when y'all do the burn ban, that shuts any outdoor burning.
Has any county started that yet so far, any burn bans?
No, not that I know of.
We usually do, Mr. Erickson and Donnie's back there, me and him, we're the folks together. If a commissioner has a concern, we have the ability, y'all give me the ability of issuing a burn ban, let alone the coordination, and Donnie can speak on it, but we work together. Donnie, would you please?
Okay. What happens when y'all make a burn ban, all that affects us is we suck it down optimizations. Is your burn ban to the forest, naturally, if it gets out there and get wiped from the bunkers, hard, it's moving coming in. Just thanks to consider, is this the time of the year the law pick up, start to inside print burns? I remember one year, we, they'll give the burn ban, and then they want to do the picking up at Oklahoma. And then also in the woods, we got radio coming in. So if you got a burn ban, we can go out there during the campfires, which they can't do.
We only do it when we have to.
Yes, yeah. So I don't think we're there yet, we're not handling a lot of fires. We already have some routine fires, about as much. But I just don't think it's time yet.
Me and Donnie always work together.
Do we have anything else for us?
Thank you.
Thank you. We go to Dale Sheriff Field, Larry Duke, City of Onondah.
Good morning, Captain. Everything's good. The proposal for the old sheriff's apartment building, we went to our attorney, and he said everything is in line, that we could do the swap for the impact fee and the water hookup with the new, what do y'all call your new building?
George Jenner.
George Jenner.
Yes, right. Right. The only thing that he asked for an accountant standpoint is that we trade checks. So whatever the amount of the impact fee and the hookup for that piece of property, and we will include the EMS building in that also. Okay, so whatever that amount is, if we can swap checks for that, we're good to go.
Mr. Brenner, the board says the board doesn't understand, y'all entered a lease with the City of Onondah on the old sheriff's building that they've done some remodeling, really made it look real good, and, you know, that'll take it off the engine.
Right, and we will, I would say probably within the next year, we will remove the old sheriff's building, and it will be a parking lot. The Magnolia tree will stay, and we'll make it look nice over there which will benefit everybody in the park that it really needed here, like you could tell this morning.
We have been in disagreement with them, but I think we need a motion on the form of exchange.
I think you did that.
Did you do it? Have a motion on the floor, if you're second.
Second.
Have a motion, it's second. Any discussion? How's that?
Yes.
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 Mr. Chairman, do you need to authorize an aid to give with the city attorney to do a little big one?
Yeah.
And the Veterans Park project, I think, maybe y'all have noticed the new playground split in, and we appreciate your help, y'all brought us some dirt and some labor, and we appreciate the help with that right there. And it's, that should be concluded by regular time, that should be back inside and open.
That's what I said.
That's another good example of Steve Onondah and the whole county community working together.
Absolutely, absolutely. Okay, thank you.
Thank you. All right, we'll go down to 6,045 Estuary, Mr. Melinda Gates.
Good morning, commissioners, and staff, thank you for having me. Melinda Gates, and I'm the executive director of the Trump Hatch Bay Estuary Program. This morning, I come before you in an annual exhibit of respectfully requesting a resolution that identifies this upcoming week, that's September 21st through the 27th, as National Estuary Week. The purpose of this is to bring education and awareness about our estuaries and our rivers and what they bring to our community. I want to thank you guys for your support, Commissioner William Wilmer Stafford for being on our coalition board and his support throughout the year, and how these estuaries really just identify our economy, our environment, and our just quality of life. So with that, I respectfully request a resolution identifying the week of September 21st through the 27th.
Mayor Marshall.
We have a resolution, do we need to read that resolution?
This is Resolution 25, that is 23, a resolution of the board of county commissioners of Holmes County, Florida, recognizing and making a local dedication of the National Estuary Week and providing for an effective date. So that's our resolution, but it's adopted this day of September 2025 and will be signed by Earl Stafford.
That's true. All right, you have a motion to adopt this resolution?
I have a motion.
Have a motion on the floor, if you're second.
Second.
Have a motion, and it's second, any discussion? How's that?
Yes.
Yes.
Yeah.
Yes.
Melinda, thank you for all you did.
All right, we have a big AR certification Holmes County, which is for year 2022, 2023, and 23 and 24.
It's Bakari, good morning again. Just like you mentioned, it's time for the AR certification to be completed, so the annual report is already done. The certification is just making sure that there weren't any additional changes to any building projects or expected projects when it comes to the housing. Right now, I had it marked as zero. I reached out to a few contacts, and they said nothing had changed, so I just wanted to pass that on. And if so, then we just need the signatures I can submit it to the housing coalition.
You got to be quick. All right, section 23, ready to approve?
Second.
You're second, have a motion, then a second. Any discussion? How's that?
Yes.
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 Thank you.
Early learning coalition, proclamation.
Actually, it's Brooke Powell, I thank you guys.
Oh, thank you.
No, it's perfectly fine, we had to make a last-minute substitution. Thank you so much for having us here today. As you gentlemen know, the early learning coalition plays a huge role in our school readiness program, which is the subsidized assistance that goes to eligible families to put their children into childcare. And also, we administer the DPK program through the state, which, congratulations to Mimi and Paul's childcare. They received an excellent rating from the state of Florida, only one of 12 or one of 11 across our southern county service area. So they are to be commended, and we'll be doing a formal recognition for them. We come to you today, though, to request that you proclaim an early learning day in honor of the 20th anniversary of the Early Learning Coalition. This month, we were put into existence by state statute, so I request you that you approve the resolution, I'm sorry, the proclamation.
I need a question, boy. Out of here, Hudson, to approve the proclamation. So, you want to take a read?
Yeah, I didn't have it, I was just wondering.
Mr. Chairman.
Okay.
Don't read it. I don't, I don't, I say, I need to listen to the board, you can read.
Just read the headline there for the record. I wouldn't.
Yes.
Director, proclamation, this is recognizing the 20th anniversary of the Early Learning Coalition of Northwest Florida, and celebrating the importance of early learn.
I'm making a motion.
I have a motion on the floor, if you're second.
Second.
Have a motion, it's second, any discussion? How's that?
Yeah.
Yeah.
Yes.
Thank you, gentlemen, I appreciate it.
Thank you. I will go down to the axeman.
Good morning, I'm Helen Waters, county extension director for the University of Florida, here in Holmes County. We talked about this at the. We go in on Saturday and rent a Sunday rental. A lot of the other facilities are that way. It's just simply unless you have somebody hired full-time or hired specifically with the job to go in and reset that facility for the next renters, you need to just rent it out as the weekend. And I think with the rental fee and the way weekend rentals typically go, it'll make sense. You can come in on Saturday, do what you need to do. You can use the building on Sunday if you need to, to clean up or wrap up, or you know, you might have a weekend family reunion, whatever that might look like. And then we would do the weekday rentals, obviously, would just be a one-day rental. No long-term rentals. You can't have somebody come in and say, we want to use it every weekend for three months or the first weekend of every month, those sorts of things. It would be at the discretion of the building management to request additional insurance and things like that if there's a vent out there that we feel like needs to have something along those lines. And then the facilities only rented to one party at a time, so if somebody rents an open-air pavilion and another group can't rent the inside facility, I just think with one set of bathrooms and things like that, there's just opportunity for conflict. So with that, I didn't change anything else. As far as the fees go, you can see them there on the paper. I did a lot of research. Facilities, there's no facilities that are new in the area or close to new of that type, but there are other facilities in the county of similar size. And so I think that those fees pretty much track right in line. And then there's a wide variety of facilities throughout the county that if you don't want to pay that fee, that you could utilize and still have a space to hold your event. You guys have any questions?
Do you need a motion to this effect?
I would. And what I would ask the board is, once we make this motion that this is a policy, so in order to change this, it would have to come with a board. So for example, if there's a group that you feel like shouldn't have to pay the fee or you decide you don't, because I know history repeats itself, we know with the old I Center, you guys got phone calls like that. And so what I would like this to do is be made a policy, so it's black and white, that every citizen and resident gets treated the exact same. There's no commissions or favors done for anyone, that this is a policy and we can just stick to it. And there's no question as to what the policy is.
Make a motion for these are our policy.
Second. I have a motion as second. Any discussion? House vote.
Yes.
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 Okay, I'll send this over to Nate, just to get him to take a final look at, you know, some of the furbage in it, but we should be good to go.
All right. Thank you.
Thank you all.
Next, where I'll be SEH, our presentation.
Good morning. Thank you for your time this morning and this opportunity to give ourselves to give. If we have a few minutes after the presentation, we're happy to answer some questions, but to get right to it, get up into the next slide, please. Our firm is a multi-discipline firm with full-service offerings. We offer a ton of services that we can offer to the county. Today, we're here to focus on a few of them that are, we think, that probably the higher priorities for an accounting. Today, our team is myself. Oh, yeah. Can you hear me now? So my name is Rita Abadnevi. I would be serving as your client service manager and just constant communication, answering questions, connecting with people who can help with particular issues. And I will be checking in, make sure everything's going well. As your program manager, I would be responsible to get the team together and a project manager for a particular project that would best suit for that project. We have Jenna Williams. She is a grant specialist and our urban planner. She will be talking to you a little bit about grant opportunities and planning. Chris is our architect. He will be talking to you about general architecture and public safety facilities. Alan Hart, he is our business development lead and he will be telling you a little bit shortly about all the services that we can offer you. Next slide, please. Okay. So that's our current Florida-based team, but we are rapidly growing and the company nationwide has over nine hundred employees that can support local projects with plenty of manpower, plenty of talent. So we have a lot to offer. And to talk about our grant opportunities, I'm going to hand it over to Jenna.
Hey, everyone. I'm Jenna. As Rita said, I am urban planner and funding specialist. Just wanted to touch briefly on our planning services. As you can see from the slide, we offer a wide array of planning services to meet our clients' needs. And we're aware that development is increasing in Holmes County and we would love to help you all be more intentional and proactive regarding this development and make sure that when development and growth happens in Holmes County, it's on your terms and in your best interests. And through our planning services, we can help guide you through that. Go to the next slide. As a funding specialist, oh, no worries. As a funding specialist, I enable local governments to prepare grant applications to secure funding for various planning and engineering projects. And I'm not just a grant provider. As Rita said, SEH is a full-service firm, so when we talk about grants, we sit down with our clients, we listen to what your pain points are, we identify projects that will solve those problems, and then we align those projects with appropriate funding sources. And then we write, we assist in writing the grant application, and we can also provide the post-award activities, such as grant administration. Another example of benefit of SEH is that we've established relationships with many of the managers of the grant programs that you see on the slide. This gives us a direct line of communication throughout the grant lifecycle, starting with the application all the way through to project closeout. Our hands-on approach enables us to advocate for you every step of the way, and we're proud of that. A recent example of funding success is with our work with the town of Lee. Within the past two years, we've assisted the town of Lee in obtaining just over two million dollars in funding. This money has empowered the community to begin upgrading their water and wastewater systems. The successful realization of these projects was made internally by the support we provided in securing those funds. Two more points I'd like to make before I pass it on is that when we met briefly with Mr. Corbin, he pointed out that two priority areas he's interested in looking at are repairing a dam that needs to be rehabilitated. In addition, he mentioned upgrading several rural fire stations. That prompted me to do some research. I've identified some possible funding opportunities. I've written up a little sheet that I can leave with y'all, so you can take a look at it, and I'd be happy to talk further about those. Along those lines, it is legislative budget request season. Dam rehabilitation and fire station upgrades are both excellent candidates for funding consideration. The legislative delegation meeting for Holmes County is Tuesday, September thirtieth, and the deadline to submit an agenda request is Thursday, September twentieth. I would be happy to walk y'all through the budget request process and assist you with the appropriate form. And with that, thank you. And that's it. Chris.
Thank you. Hi, good morning. My name is Chris Bowen. As Rita said, I'm an architect located in Panama City, Florida. At SEH, we work on a variety of different projects, but for today, I just kind of want to focus on fire and emergency service. One unique aspect to our architectural team is we are built around experts who are in the trenches, on the front line, serving communities. Mark, he is not only just an architect, but he is a paid on-call firefighter. Chuck is not only just our business development, on our business development side, but he's also a retired fire chief from Penosha County. And we have architects that are just laser-focused on emergency and fire department projects with more than a decade of experience working on those projects. At, next slide, please. At SEH, our design approach incorporates all of the best practices of modern-day fire stations in our building designs, and I'm just going to touch on some of those best practices, which the number one one here is just cancer prevention. And what that means as far as our building layout goes is incorporating hot and cold and warm zones within the building to separate some of those high-hazard areas from the everyday working environment. Another key aspect, next slide, please. Another key aspect here is decompression spaces. And our goal here is to create an environment for the mental well-being of our first responders. And the benefit to that is, the benefit includes the sustainability of the workforce, sustainability of the life of that person in that field. So the next one is building training props into the facility. If you can give me the next slide, please. Incorporating training areas within your building so that the staff don't have to leave their home area, their home station, to gain the necessary knowledge to do their job safely. And the final one that I'm going to talk about on the next slide is future-proofing these facilities, incorporating multigender use spaces in the facility, and then also accounting for the growth of your community and what that means as far as the future expansion of your buildings. So with that, I'm just going to turn it over to Alan.
Hey, I'm Alan Hart. I'm the business development leader for Florida. I've been an engineer for about thirty-one years. All that's been spent here in the North Florida region, in the Vanhandle. Business development, engineering, you know, you look at a YWEL. I'm ADHD and I'm extrovert, so they couldn't figure out how to keep me behind a computer, so they said, well, go talk to people. That's what I like to do and that's what I enjoy. And if you take a look real quick, that's a lot of the services that we provide. Also, I want to point out, eighty percent of the services that we provide, we do provide to governments, municipalities, counties. We really love working with smaller municipalities and counties to help them develop, you know, develop their plans to keep infrastructures strong, taking a look at what the community needs. When we were talking earlier, one of my first clients whenever I came to SEH was the town of Lee. Lee's got three hundred and fifty folks, and I worked really closely with their town manager there, Son Haysler. So I got to know her, got talking to her, and she started sharing what her needs were. They have development there for an industrial park, and they did not have adequate water and sewer. And so I said, well, let's focus on that first. And so we started developing some grants to help the water, to help them get, develop the water and sewer that they needed there. Then it just went forward. We said, you know, hey, we've got some stormwater issues. Well, let's take a look at that. So, you know, what I try to do is listen to the client, try to hear what are your concerns? What do you need? And then how do we go about that? And that's where Jenna and I work together. And we work together to put together a program that brings the funding to the table, then we try to get the engineering done and look at how we move that forward. So everything the communities are looking at right now is just, you know, resiliency for infrastructure is very important, whether it's water, sewer, wastewater, stormwater roads. So we touched on everything, you know. We helped Lee get a grant for SS4A grant, the roadway systems. We just helped them get a VA grant to do vulnerability assessments. So Lee's just one. We're also working with Sop Chapi. I do a lot of work with Sop Chapi. I've had a relationship with those guys for about six, seven years, eight years almost. We've been working with Leonard there, he's now the mayor, and then working with Seth Three, who's now the Public Works Director. And so that's been a pretty great, pretty good relationship. You know, I just look at everything that we do, we build relationships, because what we want to do is become a part of your team, not just somebody that's on the outside. We want to work together with Holmes County to do the best that we can to make Holmes County the best that it can do. Like I said, I've been here thirty years in the Vanhandle. I've even been in this room a couple times in my career, early on, probably fifteen, twenty years ago. So it's great to be in front of you all the day. And then one of the things, just real quickly, is water tanks and water tower. I have a little bit of history, because I did work with a previous firm that might have helped go with that a little bit. So had a little bit of history of that, I was not there when that happened, but we do have water tank services. We actually do water tank maintenance and inspections. We have a bit of design built part of our firm that we do water tank maintenance agreements and do the work on the tanks. Just, that was just all I wanted to kind of give you all this morning. We appreciate you letting us come and speak with y'all this morning, and I'll turn it back after you.
Mr. Chairman, I wanted to thank you for your time, and Jody Chairman, allow us a few minutes to take some questions. We would be...
Any questions from the board?
Yeah, briefly. Good presentation.
Thank you.
So you do eighty percent government, right? So how does, what is your, how does your charging mechanism work? I mean, what do you, how do you charge work? Do you do, is there an RFP, RFQ from this local county, or is it based on that, and each grant, or is it just a...
When we started, about, when I got here three years ago, that's when we really started working. We got no continuing services contracts, and we have since. So we like to work with those when we can, because that's the general mechanism that, you know, that the county has to get, you know, to work with them. We'll also look at RFQs whenever they come out, things like that. But as far as fees, a lot of the things we do are on some. So, you know, we're looking at, you know, what is the project in paying them on the development fees that way. We also do time line to exceed. Like I've got a couple of projects that I do with Sop Chapi, where it's a time line to exceed so that we can give them the services they need, but if we, you know, if we can keep it very, you know, budgetary-wise, we did that as far as the lead pipe. We helped them with their lead pipe, soft, their lead pipe reporting. And so we did that as a time line to exceed, and we stayed under the number, but we didn't know exactly how that was going to play out. So when it comes to things like that, we try to be flexible so that we can give you the best value that we can. And, you know, again, once the continuing services contract comes up, we'll definitely put in for that. And a lot of times, John will ask for a rate payment, something like that, but usually we do work up amongst some for most of our projects.
So if you do a continuing service contract in Holmes County, which we've talked about here in the past, it's a grant holder. So if you do a continuing service contract, that'd be a certain amount for that particular year or years, or however you want to do that. Like the counties are utilized, and now if a grant is done, there is, you know, there is an administration fee, an administration fee, go back to the county, is that how that works?
We'll also look at RFQs whenever they come out, things like that. But as far as fees, a lot of the things we do are on some. So, you know, we're looking at, you know, what, what is the project in panel and what are the fees like? We also do time line to exceed. Like I've got a couple of projects that I do with SOF Chapi where it's a time line to exceed so that we can give them the services they need, but if we, you know, if we can keep it very, you know, budgetary-wise, we did that as far as the, the lead pipe. We helped them with their lead pipe, soft, their lead pipe reporting. And so we did that as a, as a time line to exceed, and we stayed under the number. But we didn't know exactly how that was going to play out. So when it comes to things like that, we try to be flexible so that we can give you the best value that we can. And, you know, again, once we, if we, if the continuing services contract comes up, we'll definitely put in for that. And then a lot of times, John will ask for a rate payment, something like that. But usually, we do work out the, like, some for most of our projects.
So if you do a continuing service contract in Holmes County, what we talked about here in the past is variance rider. So if you do a continued service contract, that'd be a certain amount for that particular year or years, or however you want to, you guys could do that. Like the counties are usually, well, as I now, if a grant is done, there is, you know, there is a administration fee, an administration fee, go back to the county. Is that how that works, or that would go? How, how does that work when you, when you do a grant? And fees are involved when you're doing a continuing service contract?
Typically, and I hope I get this right, we, we have not really charged for our grant services. We try not to, unless it's, you know, an SS4A grant, it's a, is a much larger grant. And typically, we have charged for those services because it's a very large grant. We typically don't try to charge for the grant services. We try to come alongside the county, help the county fill out the applications. And, and then if there is a grant administration part of that, that can either go back to the county if, if they got to do the grant administration, which is handled in-house. But we still come right alongside the county, and part of our time goes to help them. Because right now, we're working with Brazilians in Florida, and we're working with the RIF. So we have them once a month meeting where we're, where the, with the town league, the Soma's in the meeting, RPM's in the meeting. And then we discuss what needs to be submitted, the paperwork, the forms that have to be done. So we typically, again, come alongside the county. That's, that's really within our fee schedule, just that we're not having. So it doesn't go up, we don't have a separate fee for the admin to help, to help our clients get through that. Because that's a, that's a pretty tedious process.
Yeah.
And, you know, with, especially with Soma, she's, she's a one-person chef. So we, we, we help her with anything we can. Because if I can keep her from having to stay past our plot and be with her family, that's what I want to do. So that's kind of how we, we work out. And same thing like with the legislative budget request, I started doing those several years ago. You know, one of the things we try to tell everybody when you do that is get in touch with, get in touch with your senator, get in touch with the guy that's your representative. We're working with Jason Schiff right now, and working with Morris Simon for SOF Chapi, for some other folks in that area, Panacea. And then we try to get them knowing what's coming before we go to the delegation. And then we'll go to the delegation with, with, with those guys and be there for support. So we just, anything we can do, we do. We just, that's, that's what I do. I just like being, being with my clients and covering them anywhere again. Everybody answer your question.
Yeah, yeah, yeah. I guess our next step is if the chairman were looking at, like, we need to do an RFQ and our, you know, to go out and service contract or something like that. I don't know how any other way you could actually do that. It's sure there's a way around it, but I don't know for, in government, it's kind of hard.
It's very difficult.
Yeah.
And most of the folks that we're doing grant work with, we are on our, we are on the continuing services. But again, if we can help you guys, you know, that's what we want to do. So that's what we, but, you know, with CCNA, you know, there's limits, and we understand that. But we're just here to help, and we love, we love doing that.
Appreciate it.
Any other questions?
Thank you.
Thank you, Alan.
Thank you.
Can we do that, some leave behind of our presentation? Please forgive us a couple of steps due to different needs, so please forgive us a little.
Thank you.
All right, we'll go down to the uniform policy, road and bridge.
Just a concern of the children, is that? It was. And their recommendation is always insurance, go recommend you long pants, boots, and all that. That's their recommendation. So unless y'all got any questions, I'm going to make the motion to recommend that our staff wear, wear shorts, nothing raggy, let's get it into policy. I'd love to see us give it to the different shirt.
How, how would, maybe that policy on the, on the shirt change in that? Is there anything on it, or do we have to go to our time limit, or?
Did you say that we might, we could change it?
We, we'd let these wear out once they get out.
They don't charge it, you have to go back. We have trouble with people leaving, not turning back in, and closing, stuff like that. You know, I'm all about a uniform. I need cause and employees out there in a certain place, and he's not, he's identified with that Holmes County shirt on, I got a way of demonstrating that it is him. But yes, we'd be glad that if it's approved to do whatever the board wants. There will be a charge.
Are these you first shorts? I mean, we know the board pays employees.
Yeah, that's what I was wondering, um, um, I mean, are we, are we paying for the shorts? Or we're just going to let them wear shorts?
Yes, they're wearing shorts. What we, it's worked good for.
I mean, is it a specific type of shorts, or are they just picking the shorts they want?
They pick the ones they want, but they can't come in with a name.
What?
Shorts.
But they've got some good work shorts.
Walmart, any of them are. But, I mean, it actually works good.
I mean, I guess you're saying, when you say they, you talk about Wal-Mart. Did they have a policy and what type of shorts they are? Cargo shorts, certain, they just help wear any kind of shorts?
Because they do, I mean, it's pretty professional, right? But you, you were the special guest. I guess.
Yes, well, anybody who are out there working in the county is doing. Representing us has some, you know, limitations of not coming in their pajama shorts, being as they are.
Your shorts look good. I'm not saying your shorts don't look good, but I can see a guy wearing those shorts, I don't mind it. Do you think, do you think, do you think?
Are you at Road and Bridge, or is it all just staff?
Well, that's it, that's another thing. You're going to get into, is it, is it Road and Bridge? Is it, is it the ladies that are working at Road and Bridge? Is it the recycling center? Is it everyone at the recycling center? Anybody outside, mechanic, someone? This is the question I have.
Road and Bridge is a region that wants to help their customers.
So I believe what the intent here is to get those county employees that work outside in the heat to be able to wear clothing that is more, a comfortable and less heat retaining. You could, I mean, I object to shorts. I don't object to a high-visibility polo top shirt or high-vis t-shirts. But if you're going to make it a policy for the shorts, I would recommend you follow what a lot of private companies do where they allow shorts and only in those areas where the individuals work in the extreme heat areas. Limit it, limit it to the tight shorts. Be specific, because I can tell you from experience, when you get an inch, that will take a mile. And the next thing you know, you're going to have the county employees out there wearing all kind of stuff. And it won't be looking a professional and will not give the appearance that we need to have from county employees.
Thank you.
We can leave some research and break back from children.
You don't want to, you don't do that.
Well, I, I don't mind, I mean, it is a pretty cargo shorts, if that's what you want them to wear. But I just kind of like, you know, who's all going to wear? I mean, are we going to let it go to recycling? I mean, it's you, we go.
It's out there, big.
It is hot, I'm not saying that.
Yeah, if you're outside, you need, or, you know, the building, it's, it's the recycling.
Could Nate come up with a kind of something, Mr. Stafford? Would that be good, of what areas we needed in?
Well, I mean, who's not working outside? It's not a really, it's not rocket science. I just wanted to clarify who's all using it. So anybody working outside, maybe it's from the cargo shorts, or need link cargo shorts or something like that. That's what I would make the question.
Same with shirts?
Yeah, when he needs, we get through these, the ones they have, the others.
Let's look at this, maybe, having that summer, like, to winter.
Do you want to go ahead and make a motion?
Yes, sir.
Do you have, do you make a motion?
Yeah, I said we just let, I let all outside staff, allow them to wear cargo shorts right above the knee, and, um, for work-related, anything outside. Again, um, right in that, I mean, it don't matter.
They have to be covered. And Nate won't be there.
We would just have to change it, get the positive kind of reason for it. You can make it like next to all outside employees.
You just have to change it.
Like it says, I'm short for loud whatsoever.
Yeah, just change that, make it outside employees. And the reason why I say cargo shorts are thicker shorts, I mean, they're heavier-duty shorts.
Cargo means they have a pocket.
Yeah. And, you know, and I think.
Also, if you work, yeah. They're just like the material.
Yeah.
Cargo style.
Yeah, cargo-style shorts.
Do you want to add this change, this?
Yeah, in the policy, to all outside workers?
All right, we have a motion on the floor, do your second. I have a motion on the second, any discussion? I'll vote.
Yes.
Yes.
You don't need to put Daisy Dukes in there or anything like that.
All right, we'll go down to the health department contract, is Pete Kedrick, Tracy?
Good morning.
You doing it?
I'm good. I am here to request the board's approval of the annual health department contract.
I was looking at the fees, Tracy, are those fees pretty much in line with what they were last year? Or do you have to?
I really haven't done a lot of adjustments. There may be a time where I have to, but as long as I can maintain, as long as the budget works as it is, I try not to raise those fees.
And the reason I was asking is because that's part of the, the agreement, where first in the day is those fees are included, is that correct?
Yes.
Okay.
And I do compare to other counties of similar size, similar nature. So I do keep a check on what's out there, but sometimes I just make a decision to.
They're the same as Washington County, I mean, everything.
Yes, yes.
It goes under the same umbrella. I make a motion. Make that motion.
I have a motion on the board group contract, it be scheduled, do your second. I have a motion on the second, any discussion? I'll vote.
Yes.
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 Thank you, Alan.
Thank you, Tracy. All right, I'll have the maintenance renewal, a nine-one-one department, Ashley.
The state has allocated one point eight million to specifically constrained counties. So instead of having to go through the fall grant cycle, they've allocated a certain amount of money for any maintenance renewals, called the handling systems. And I applied for two. I did our, for quarter maintenance, and I'm doing our rapid deploy west wind renewal contract. And both of those got approved by the state to qualify. So I can get all the contract about this on the minutes, so we can get those renewed for this community.
Make a motion with Simon.
All right, I have a motion on the fourth, do your second.
Chairman, for y'all, I do have a contract, and we want to do better next time we get to the board with you, Sarah, and Ashley. She's on work with Jane, next year, y'all. But I have the copy back here to the chair.
All right, any more discussion? I'll vote.
Yes.
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 Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
All right. All right, we go to building efficient planning, if we have company affairs, John Feeney.
So this is our first ever event permit application. So I'm pretty excited about it. We had a meeting, you know, late July, early August with the event committee after we received our application. They have met all the permit requirements. We had a, had an hour-long meeting where we went through some requirements, what things they did need, what they didn't need. They don't plan to close any roads. They are going to put up some signs for the radio dance. The ordinance specifies that any event that wishes to go beyond midnight is required to come before you and get a variance. So the reason we're, we're waiting so long to do it is because I've actually, we advertised it for the planning commission meeting, but since this does not fall under the land development regulations, the planning commission doesn't have any, any authority over this ordinance. So we rescheduled that meeting to today in order to advertise it properly and notify the owners. We had to wait until the day, so two weeks ago. So that's why you're seeing something, just for any benefit, it's two weeks from now. Uh, if you want to, you should have got a copy of the application now here. This is an event y'all are probably familiar with. It's going to go on for as long as I've known about Bonfay. This is for Bonfay Radio Dance. And basically, everything has been approved. We are ready to issue a permit for the product or for the event. They have met all the permit requirements. But what they're asking for is a variance from that midnight time slot. And they're requesting that they can go till up to four AM. He doesn't know that it's going to go that long. But that is, that is the request that's on the table. So the applicant is here. If you have any questions for me that I can answer, I will turn it over to Jason and let him take care of that.
I know that Egre get that, man.
I've never been there.
You tell me this here, right? We, it normally goes to around two o'clock, but, and then by two o'clock, I've had about all I want. But usually, you have people that hangs around, just, most of the crowds gone. It's usually just the locals that are just, they're hanging around and just, after two o'clock, usually relax. After, after two, about after two o'clock, it's not hard. It's just, like I said, just people hanging out in the ordinary and just locals and friends.
After nine-thirty, I'm going to hang around, hanging out, my liberty.
I'm about with you on that end.
Oh, my question, the only question I had, and I think is for Don. We don't have a noise ordinance in, in place currently.
Our, our land development regulations do have a noise ordinance. It's very hard to enforce.
That's what I'm saying, there's no enforcement in, in that. So I mean, I don't know, I guess it's just in the policy that's why you're asking for a waiver? Because, I mean, what are you going to, we don't have the noise police to send out there anyway.
No, the, the reason, so the noise ordinance is actually in our land development regulations.
Yeah.
The ordinance itself that we wrote for event permits actually specifies that midnight is the latest. And, and anything requested beyond midnight, shall we don't, on a case like this. So that's, that's why I presented it to you. If he was just wanting to stop at midnight, we wouldn't have been before you, we would have already issued the permit.
I make my first, my first, since you said midnight, I'll, I'll say everything.
All right, I have a motion on the fourth, do your second. I have a motion on the second, any discussion? I'll vote.
Yes.
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 Yep, I'll get everybody's signature pages.
All right, we'll go down to, thank you, John. Go down to delivery partner, Kim.
Just a quick reminder of the ribbon cutting for the Holmes County Senator George Gainer governmental complex. It's Thursday, October 2nd at two-thirty before the rodeo. We're working on inviting, you know, like, other dignitaries and, and, you know, out to that and in the rodeo. So, so we're really excited about that and the progress that's going on out there. Everything's coming, coming along. If y'all haven't had a chance to go out there and kind of walk around and see, uh, everything looks, it looks fantastic. So, um, something I brought up the last few meetings is, you know, in anticipation of the upcoming 2026 legislative session, the county needs to identify their legislative priorities for this year. So just want to have that discussion in advance of the delegation meeting two weeks from today. We've had conversations with the delegation and, you know, informed them that y'all are going to make those decisions today. You know, have that discussion, and, you know, identify those projects that y'all think are most needed here, and then present those to the delegation in two weeks. It'll be here. And then that'll give us a few weeks to get those appropriation request forms together and into those forms. So, um, something that I wanted to begin with is, if you recall, during the tornadoes earlier this year, there was some discussion after that with the legislative delegation about some of the needs for the county. David could probably attest to this, some of the equipment that was needed, the county ended up having to rent.
Yeah, that quickly, if I may. When we got out there and reached heaven to people, the first thing we had to do was find a way to get people out of the house, into, back to everyday, to live as best as possible. Skid steers is very important for grapples when you move in debris. And we actually talked with Tim and Shane and some more. They said if we put that requisition in, that would be a fungible item, and actually, we could use it anywhere else too. But a couple of skid steers were one of the most important things for grapples.
I, I think the, the feeling that we received from them was, hey, this is, this is equipment, as many will spend it. Feel like they can make a good argument forward to the legislature for emergency response and recovery equipment. Feel like that's something that the legislature is likely to approve. And certainly, you've got a demonstrating need, so that was one of the recommendations.
And the sheriff's not here today, but he's got that list, but.
And the sheriff's not here today, but he's got that list, but I do know two skid steers was on there and some possible portable generator.
Well, if they're telling us, we need to clear it off.
Well, like I said, I think it was an identified need and feel like it's something that was, you know, should be well received. I think around $200,000 for some of that equipment to help the county be better positioned in response of natural disasters.
I remember when that hit on a Saturday about 11:30 that afternoon, Sheriff Nell was on the phone. And Sunday morning, we had a executive order, and Monday morning, if y'all recall, we was working. Record time.
And the next project, if you recall, the county last year received a million dollars for the jail rehabilitation expansion project. If you recall, at the delegation meeting, they were very supportive of what the sheriff is doing out there, especially some of the rehabilitation programs. And the county's need to receive additional funding for that expansion. Also, I'd like the county to consider submitting a similar request for that, for that project. We know it's going to be more than what we received this last year. And feel like with some of the support that we have in the legislature, specifically with the criminal justice appropriations committee, we feel like the county would be in good position to receive additional funding this next year.
Does the board, do you have anything else?
Well, yeah. Did you talk to Mr. Laub Sigler on that issue out there? Do you think anything under appropriations is going to be able to solve that issue? Or does it need to go back to?
I didn't get a chance to speak to him after that meeting. I know when we were out there, he provided some, some comments about what, where he felt like funding might be able to obtain. You know, as he mentioned, resiliency, that's something that the county has submitted for, that hopefully we'll learn something next year about. So I don't know about a lot of flavor.
Yeah, that's what I was wondering.
But I will say, infrastructure-related projects, if there's one other one that the county might identify, specifically if there's an economic development component of it, I think, you know, the delegation will be interested in sponsoring that as well. If there's a, if there's a road project, you know, maybe something around half a million dollars, you'd think, hey, listen, this is something we've been waiting on for a while. It's on the DOT work plan or not.
Land's ready.
I've been going for it.
I was going to say that more. The more road we got to get it, now that, now that 185 is going to be a lower than 1200. Yeah, that's a little over budget.
When the board say they can assure these two on,
Yeah, I would do that. Let's term out with that about 250 on the, on the equipment, because you're going to have your, your grapples and stuff like that also.
I'm not sure of the total, getting out of being four instead of two, so let me give it a share.
I think you have, you have 250 possibly.
I'm guessing grapples are about 80, even 90 now.
Yeah, the, the.
I think the, the skid steers around, it's around, you know, about 90, yeah.
Yeah, so it's about 125 for it all, which is, that's about 250, can you do two?
And that would be, that'd be all, I think, turned in over there.
Yeah. Then do the jail, send out some of those.
What was that, how many generated, give the sheriff how many four generated?
Is that under the emergency response and recovery equipment?
You know, and another thing David was looked at when we ran into the issue out there in Northville, was looking at a pump. Not one look, I mean, yeah, because we all should put it out. I'm pretty sure.
I think so.
Yeah, we don't have one for this whole, our camp would beg and borrow if that one even, we ain't one of them. Yeah, and that's the best story. So. I would, yeah, they're about 100, 125,000, I think.
I think those two are great, as if the feedback we've already received on it, we think it'll put the county in good position this year. Now, if y'all want to vote on it.
Your motion on the floor? Do you hear a motion?
Something.
Your second? I have a motion to second, any discussion? I'll vote.
Yes.
Yes. All right, we go down to the county engineers, do you ready?
How are you, Don?
All right. All right.
Good morning, Mr. Oh, got a couple of project updates on the evening. Our busy B infrastructure project, we've submitted for all of our permits. There's seven total. Three with DOT, two with FDP for the water and sewer extension, and then two with Water Management District for the stormwater and weather impacts. We've already got two of our, our two FDP permits back approved. And we're working through comments on the others. Last week, we submitted the plans and bid specs and cost estimate to Florida Commerce to get permission to advertise the bids. We're hoping to get approval back from them within the next couple of weeks. I plan on bringing the plans and specs, or abbreviated version, to the October meeting to get approval to advertise the bids. And so that's, we're looking at opening the bids in November and construction starting in January. And with a 300-day construction contract ending by the end of the year for the, for the public infrastructure part. Any questions on that?
Hold every question. Can you?
Uh, I did forget to mention that we have our surveyor currently working on the, on the deeds to deed the public road and the easement areas back to the county and city. And I have, I got with Nate on some draft deeds and easement documents. As soon as I get the descriptions back from the surveyor, I'm going to send them to Nate for a deal. And, and get his blessing, and then we'll send them to, to busy B for the year.
Is the size of the busy B complex, it's still the same as what they anticipated from the beginning, or do you?
Yeah.
It is.
On the, on the pilot project, it's in construction and possibly on. We're about 60% complete with the water main extension. Getting water from the water tower down to the, to the site itself. Haven't started yet on the, on the sewer extension, on the, on the road and retention ponds. I got retention ponds completely graded out. And, and got the road subgraded up to, up to the bottom of the base, but we're running into an issue, something we need to discuss this morning. Two weeks ago, had a property owner call me, Mr. Arthur Labonda. He, he owns property right there on the north side of Joe Man Road. At the intersection of State Route 81. Contractor was working up toward his property and had it laid out where the road is going. He called him himself and said, we're putting a road on his property. I have some exhibits I want to share. The first sheet here is our current design, our current construction. And that yellow highlighted line is what our surveyor shows as the roadway line. And we met on this early on, you know, had a meeting out there on site. And, and we shifted the road, even though the roadway line shows it going through the man's building, we shifted the road to avoid his building. But the, the red sketch there is where he is claiming from his survey that his line is at. I went back, went back to our surveyor, told him the situation. He went back, double-checked his numbers, came back and actually did a boundary survey for his lock right there, and that's what the second page. And that's where he pulled old DOT roadway maps. And, and that's where he's showing the line. I spoke with Mr. Labonda this morning before the meeting. You know, they called, when I went out there to meet with him, I told him, I said, well, I'll do everything I can. I'm going to try to shift the road and stay off of your property. And when I went back and looked at shifting the road, it was going to create a real tight turn for the trucks exiting Joe Manny. They were going to have to swing into on, you know, oncoming traffic, the opposing lanes, to make that turn and not off track on his property. If, if his property line is correct. Our surveyor is saying that his line is correct, and that there's, there's discrepancies. You know, it is a definite issue, and here, here is our options moving forward. You know, one option is, you know, to say my property line is correct, you know, plow forward with the design that we have it. And, and we end up taking out a corner clip of his, of his parking lot that's out there now. You know, that would probably result in a work stop. You might would call the law, the law come out there, you know, and end up stopping the project. Another option is to, you know, try to come to some type of agreement with him, concede that his line is correct, and try to purchase a corner clip that we need to make that turn. I spoke with Mr. Lot Labonda this morning about that option. And on the phone, he told me that, that he's willing to work with the county. But he don't want to get screwed, that was the exact words. And that he knows what's coming in there, and that, you know, it's not going to be, it's not going to be free, it's not going to be cheap, is what he said.
Well, if that's the case, and you stand behind our survey,
Yeah.
Why are we, I mean, we don't need to, I mean, I know you're discussing it, I know why you're bringing up your concern, but if he's already has that attitude towards this, I mean, I'd say just tell him to go get an attorney. We'll just keep plowing forward. Because I do not want to stop progress over there. We have already got, what, $3 million just in county money in that, in that project. I mean, this is a, this is, this is a vital thing to the community, and honestly, when this gets built, this, this is just not going to increase his land and his property values, it's going to increase everybody else's around it too much. So I mean, he loves.
How much was it?
How much, how much what? Just a little, it's just a little portion here, I mean.
Yes, I mean, and, and getting on to another option. Another option is to shift the road, it's going to take, shift the road about 10 or 12 feet to, to avoid his corner, his alleged corner. And construct that substandard radius to keep the project rolling and not delay construction. And then work through, through, you know, courts or eminent domain or whatever we need to, to make that a safer radius in the future.
Yeah, if it's going to become a safety need to run, I would not change the course of action of what we're.
See, I mean, I agree with you, Clint, but the only problem is, you know, when, when we start plowing forward and they go out there with a grader and they, and they soft cut his parking lot and clip it out, something's going to happen. He's going, he's going to call the law or something, you know.
Well, what's going to happen is the surveyor that we paid the survey is, I mean, you're telling me we don't, I mean, they don't want to do their job if that's the case.
Right, I mean, and I talked, I talked to our surveyor yesterday afternoon, when he actually sent me, sent me this last night. That he willing, you know, willing to stand in court, that his line is correct, you know, he's, he thinks that, he thinks that the property owner out there has moved some corners.
So let me ask you, that's the same property owner that built that garage out there for commercial use? Would, did that commercial use ever go through the planning and zoning to get that done?
Not according, not according to keys.
No. It was built without permit. No, nothing, I mean, and that's what I'm saying, this is where we're at, and I don't want that to stop a multi-million dollar facility that's coming into this county that's going to benefit everybody. So I mean, my feelings on this, my board, I mean, I, I'm, I'm fine with that. I'm fine with that.
Don't pay in some cases like this, do a, do a, a third survey with another surveyor.
You know, to be honest, this is the first time this issue has ever, ever happened. So I'm kind of learning as I go. I don't, I would think that would be the next course of action, if you try to, you know, get a third-party survey, to come in there, who picks that, I'm not sure. You know, I'm really not, I'm really, really not sure. Nate, do you have?
Normally we would go get a third party, get a, get a third survey, but who's our surveyor on?
Rare Earth and Science is out there. Yeah. Their name's on the second page.
I thought that was you.
No, no, his, his surveyor's out of the, uh, can't, can't remember the name of it.
And that would be fleshed out if you contest, I mean, there would be a third survey. Our surveyor's telling us it's correct, there's a lot of them.
And, I mean, we don't need, I mean, even though our, our surveyor's saying his line's going through his building, that was built without permit, we don't need his building area. We just need a little corner clip, you know, is all we need, which is technically on, on county property according to our survey.
Well, if he's saying it's going to cost us a lot and it ain't going to be cheap, you know, and there've been no permits on his stuff, there's no permits on none of that commercial building that goes through planning. You know, I, I don't, in 1015P, I just don't see why we're going to alter that. And I'm saying, I mean, if he's right, I mean, he has an option to come, you know, suit the county and prove his point, let a judge decide.
The only thing I think you were saying is that if we, if we go on with this without a third survey, it's going to be shut down.
I mean, it's a possibility, you know, that it's, something's going to happen that's going to stop work, you know, and then, then we'll have to figure out.
What's going to happen?
I mean,
I mean, it would have to be a judge order at that point to stop it.
Well, I mean, he could go out there and he could put up a fence where he thinks his line is right in the way, you know. Or he, you know, when we get out there and start taking out the corner of his little parking lot, he might, you know.
It all settle matter, he doesn't get your project management.
Excuse me, before you speak, I'm raising him. Ronnie, but if you get an alternative survey, he, he's not, that's not going to allow him to go ahead with it.
No.
That's not going to allow him to go ahead with it, to get an alternative survey. He can't stop you then. Am I right?
Yeah, he can do whatever he wants.
Well, I, I, the reason I say this is when, oh, we done the par and that time we had a lot of trouble with the surveyor, we had to go get him to turn off the survey.
Right.
Well, when that second surveyor come in there and he come in on the same line we had, it kind of shut down. But I, I mean, but I'm like, Ronnie, if you go ahead with this, and I'd be, I'd be a favor, go ahead with it. I think you, he's going to stop the work somewhere.
And here, here, you know, coming into the meeting this morning, my, my, my recommendation before the meeting was to try to work something out with him, have a meeting out there, look at maybe purchasing a corner clip to keep it out of the courts. But he, the, the property owner sent me a text while we was in here at a meeting. And I talked to him this morning, he said he'd be willing to work. I think I told you, you know, it wasn't going to be cheap. But then he sent me a text while we was in the meeting that said that, I can't talk to you anymore about this. My, my property is under contract for, I'm selling it. If you, if you need anything, you have to talk to my realtor.
Well, David met with him, and I'm just going to go and say that if David had met with him and talked to him, this is way before we started this. And this was on the building issue, and he didn't have the permit, and he said, I know what's coming. And if anybody wants this, he told David it'd be at least a million dollars. I mean, that was his attitude right then at that point. And he told David that, and that's what I'm saying. I don't know if you're going to be able, I just don't want, and I, I understand, he sees something coming. He sees money, he sees dollar signs, but at the end of the day, this is a project that's going to benefit the whole county. You're looking at $1.48 million just in red. You're looking at one point eight million dollars just in revenue from the field tax coming off semis, off the interstate right there along. And that is a big jump to this community. And I'm telling you, I just don't wanna see that slow down in any way, shape or form. Now, unless the judge gets involved and all that changes, yeah, I mean, then we're looking at something different. But come out and strike a check to somebody for a million dollars, come out of the gate, yeah, come on, really?
Right, it may not hurt, Dave, this earth be a meat with the realtor. You thought it.
Yeah.
That makes me head away.
Yeah, I mean, it'd probably throw up a red flag on, on closing of the property, you know? Uh, if I had to get it.
Well, now, Rod, if, uh, is this gonna slow us down if, if we take the time to meet the survey with the realtor in?
I mean.
Or go, or is this something we are at right now and we need to?
I mean, uh, if, if we wait more than, you know, two, three weeks, it's just gonna start delaying the project, you know? Uh, any longer than that, it's gonna, the contract is gonna be, is gonna be delayed, um.
Well, I, I kinda would, I wouldn't say just go ahead, but I kinda would, uh, really do just meet the realtor and we have to call a special meeting to make a decision on it.
Okay.
Well, Nate, inform, tell me if I'm wrong, right now, I'm not acknowledging there's a problem there because we've done our survey.
Right.
When we make our step forward and we start doing this, we're acknowledging there's a problem there. And in my eyes, I don't see that there's a problem there. Am I correct, Nate? I haven't spoken to the surveyor yet. No, I'm just saying from outside looking in, the survey's being done, our survey's being done and being completed. We're moving forward with the process. I mean, what, I'm asking, what are we doing if we're going out there to present this and saying this? I mean, do we got a problem or don't we got a problem? I'm asking you from the, from the paperwork you're seeing.
I'd like to proceed, if you could, I, I don't see any issue with.
Exactly. According to what we've done, what we've already done, there's not a problem there. So, I don't think we need to create a problem until the problem is present.
I have a question, if that's okay, Sheriff. Did, do we know, have, have we looked at his survey, Ron?
Yes, I seen.
What's the discrepancy, like, where, where are they, where are they getting, like, pulling from different points or?
They, uh, they're, they're using, their cert, his, Labana's survey is using the, uh, south section line as the boundary. And according to our surveyor, there's a huge subdivision that's unrecorded out there that these lots were laid off of, and, and that first lot is not on the section line. There's a, there's a thirty-foot gap in there for the county right-of-way. Like, you know, twenty to thirty-foot difference.
I have a question, because, uh, if you discuss with D O T, because you know, D O T's putting that ready as in, and I know they know what they do, and they got their stuff to get, uh, if you talk with him.
I haven't, I haven't.
The ready is comes in there on that corner.
I mean, we got, we got a permit with them, with what we've got designed now. You know, if, if we change that, you know?
That's what I'm saying, that we.
They're not gonna allow substandard radius to connect, they just want, want that.
Yeah, it's all been done, we're there, I mean, we're, I don't know how, why we've been talking about acknowledging there's a problem there when there really isn't, from what we have done. I mean, am I, I don't know, maybe I'm just looking at things different.
No, I agree with you there, I, there is a, uh.
That wasn't.
We, we've got the survey.
Yeah.
But if we go ahead and they do stop work, that's the only thing I was, he's gonna have to get a judge order to stop work. And I don't know how hard that would be.
Like, Mr. Dawson has just said about a motion, we don't even need a motion. We have already made the motion to build this.
Yeah, I understand, but I'm fine with that, I'm, I'm.
Yes, I do appreciate what Ron did, and I mean, you've delayed out the options, what could happen? And what, and what we got from one of our other engineers to give us no survey or, or that, so I don't wanna go.
If the permits have already been done, the surveys have already been completed, the project's already been finalized, and we're ready to go forward, go forward. Now, any given time you need, I'm taking, I'm taking words out of your mouth. Nate, you can see anybody for anything, and if that's the case, I mean, we'll do what we gotta do. I mean, that's, you know, that's, I, I might, I mean, maybe I'm just being too outspoken here, I don't know. I'm just, I'm just thinking out loud, I shouldn't think it out loud.
I love it.
You knew the survey daddy, property bar, have you?
For him? I, I, I don't remember the name, uh, I, I've got it all set.
You gave somebody a P D A.
Uh, I can't remember the name, but I do have it at the office.
Kinda, I mean, he's pretty good survey, I think he's talking about it. It's crazy for him to come up with a survey and y'all know it.
Yeah, I mean, it sounds crazy, but it does happen a lot. I mean, you have survey discrepancies, you know, happen all the time, but.
That's a fuck.
I, I mean, it is, it's a big difference, it's a big difference.
Well, if our survey showed, where his survey showed, we would've knew this a long time ago. And then we would've looked, went to him, talked to him, budgeted for him, for him, and then go, mate, pay them for his survey, his target fee, do whatever we need to do when after the land. But where I'm at is, we've already done this, we've already established, we already established permits, we've already established everything we need to move forward, we established the survey being done and our survey saying this, I mean.
Yeah, I mean, I, I agree on what you're saying.
We're forward, have you just, let's just go on with, or, or, do y'all, would y'all rather do something else?
Well, with two, with two different survey opinions, I'd like to, I, me personally, I'd like to get another surveyor. Just hire this out, that probably don't really go settling. I mean, he's right, and this is.
He doesn't, there's nothing to settle, that's my.
Unless, unless this surveyor's right, if he's right, then we get a buy.
Well, if you get a third one, it might be way over here or way in the middle, hey, we know, we might not do nothing.
If you did a third one, he's burning it, this is that guy's property.
No, yeah.
Sheriff, uh, I'm, I'm sorry, I'm, I'm, if we did, that's just a curve, Rod, Rod, and what's the horn? Did, did he have that asphalt mill in there, or is he got like a sign?
He's got a, he's got a, he, he's got a asphalt parking lot. And, and if you look at his survey, which I should've brought his survey, his, his asphalt is over his property line on his own survey, home to the D O T, D O T right-of-way. I mean, it approaches into the D O T right-of-way about, you know, six or seven feet, um.
I see it, well, that'd be if the D O T, you know?
A building that he built without its permit is over the setback line, and on his survey.
Disrupt your road with it.
Question on that, question, the board's way, Frank, the board ain't go with it?
I think just keep rolling whether it's until it gets, no, I just gotta look at it.
Thank you, Ray.
Thank y'all. When we sat in, I got a lady mail from one of your employees that Jake told you about Mr. Longspence. Why you here, I'd like to get that settled. I remember I called you about it, and Jake called me back. What it is, uh, when it was designed out there, uh, Mr. Longspence was left off, he give right-of-way, it's a hundred and seventy feet, uh, that was left off. Clip was designed, and I hope Jake will have told you about it.
The other last, the last thing on that, on that road was the, was the drainage issue there.
Well, it's a hundred and seventy feet, and, uh, I don't know what we have left in that, but I'd like to hand it in since I know we, we all moved through. Uh, do you know the section I'm talking about that was left off?
No, no, I have to give a check on that.
You want me to bring back the next meeting, Coach?
Yeah.
I promise, Mr. Long, we get it to care, it's about six hundred and fifty dollars, what it turns out to be.
But all the, getting all the, all the fence relocation on that, the county had to pay for it?
Yes, D O T does, my favorite fence, and it just got left off, just get with Jake, if you don't mind.
Okay, I will.
Go on to the next again.
Sure will.
All right. Thank you. All right, how, Sheriff?
Yeah, I've got the, uh, all the latest on here again, but I don't have a decision yet, I can't correct it, that's right. Yeah, so we can't make any decisions, so.
All right. All right, go down to the county attorney, the joint resolution, with the, the information.
And y'all got it, you know, to the voter, and, uh, I don't know, it was sent to me, which is waiting on Sunday. I'd have that off, gonna review it. Very simple agreement, it just more or less a slip of what was voted on, have something in writing. The only thing that I'm very concerned with, you know, I'm, y'all looking on, on further down, it says it is further resolved, you know, we start that payment for the fiscal year twenty twenty-seven through twenty twenty-eight. And if B Z B isn't, I've been doing by then. You know, what, what would your department make that payment?
That's what I said, Nate, and it's got shell, you know, what I've done with, it says we shall make that payment.
You get, you get it.
I get it, yeah. Uh, I don't really like that.
Well, the, the agreement was, which, so that they got started a year, they got started.
A year after they got started.
That's what I said, it reflects the, the, the one year.
Shell, they go a year after, you know?
That's what. That'd be easy, but you don't, you're good with that, you know?
I'll make a motion that we approve resolution twenty twenty-five one with a stipulation of making that one correction.
All right, have a motion on forward, and here's second. I motion in the second, any discussion, out of the way.
Yes, yes, yes.
Yes. All right, did you have anything else?
Well, that's what I did, did one second.
There, did you hear?
Give, give me.
Hey, can I give you the energy?
Yeah.
You made a good choice.
There you go.
Well, it's a good project, y'all, and we're gonna do great with it.
Thank you, President, thank y'all for paying, thank you.
All right, we'll go down to Commissioner Adam, uh, always sitting down on corridor representative for fiscal year two thousand twenty-five, two thousand twenty-six.
Nate, you had some information on this, and the reason why the attorney for the seventy-nine corridor sent this to us, as you're aware, that, um, the budget committee did not include that in next year's budget, the, the payment to the corridor, which is made up, um, of three entities, Washington County, Holmes County, and the city of Bonapate. Um, this year, um, I guess, Mr. Earl, you can kinda bring, I, I don't know, but you guys looked at poss, not funding it. So, you're in this year's budget. There's seventy-nine corridor meeting in the morning, um, I think the attorney Evan has sent, um, Nate, Dave, something, Nate, you wanna go over there?
He did send to Nate. Yes, he sent to David, today.
Yeah, I'd like to read, you better read.
I'm on bridge old plan, I'm gonna do that right at the point. He said, we don't have the type of agreement in place, that he was, excuse me, asking for forty-seven thousand eight hundred ninety-five dollars for fiscal year twenty-five, twenty-six. Uh, he understands that the Holmes County is not considering funding the seventy-nine corridor authority for that year. I just wanna make sure that the potential consequences of this are understood by the county before it makes a final decision. This time, we do not have any type of agreement in place, the utility system access to be transferred to the city of Bonapate. It's unclear if or when that will happen, as Bonapate has been extremely slow moving. Until that happens, the utility system is owned and operated by the authority. Should the authority be abandoned, there will be no one to manage the maintenance and utility system. The customer's water and wastewater service may be also interrupted. The utility system may fall into disrepair, and there will be no one to flush lines, maintain lift stations, et cetera, without anyone to operate the utility system. Service will not be available for future customers such as the B Z B. And the authority will not be able to meet the job creation requirements of the D E O grant. The authority failed to meet the job creation requirements containing that D E O grant. The Washington County, Holmes County, Bonapate, and the authority are all collectively on the book for repayment of approximately one point eight million, you could say. The request is contribution to Holmes County to the corridor authority for fiscal year twenty-five, twenty-six, is forty-seven thousand eight hundred ninety-five dollars.
So, I talked to him on the phone, and basically what he said, Clint, Holmes County needs to go and fund that for this next year because I know we've talked, the city has talked about taking over the water sewer, but nothing officially has been signed, paperwork hasn't been changed, the grant system hasn't been changed at the state. However, if we do that, that's another forty-seven thousand dollars that's gonna have to be added to the budget. Right now, we have a balanced budget, um, I know we got, um, the tax collector thing coming up. Mr. Bell's bringing that up, there's another fifty-three thousand dollars there. So, um, if you look at potentially those two items, you're gonna have to go back and pull money from somewhere to, um, do that or cut or do something. But those, those are issues that we're looking at in one of the, in this corridor. I mean, if the board wants to say, no, we're not gonna fund it, I just need a motion to that effect, that way I can let them know tomorrow will be my last day on there. Or do you wanna continue forward and continue working with the city and seeing when they're gonna take over? We have no exact date and time when they're gonna take over, to take over the corridor. And I think they're working on some stuff on their end to make sure it can happen, it's, it's a lengthy process.
All right, and as you, and like you say, uh, we did take it off of, uh, off the budget. I don't know, I don't remember what year we started paying it, probably, what's the?
Seventeen.
Seventeen.
Sixteen.
And I don't know, um, if there was an agreement, how long we pay it?
There was a, there was like, there was an agreement, but there was really nothing. It was more or less an agreement with Washington County, because Washington County applied for the grant, which at one point some, and that grant, they, and it was under Governor, um, one, Rick Scott was the governor, that had done that, and he gave that as a, um, portion for economic growth. And in that agreement was that if we did not follow through with that, Washington County, which was our applicant, would not follow through that, they would have to pay that one, like it said in that letter, with that one point seven million dollars back. But ever since, and I mean, we got all, we got all the water sewer in place, everything's in place, as you know, B Z B's ready, that they're gonna be on board here shortly. Um, we also have some people working out there, um, in, in place, uh, Dr. Hopkins is actually using the corridor facility. And that's what, one of the things that the attorney for the corridor worried about, that forty-seven thousand dollars helps fund water, um, American Water, I can't name, I can't think of the name, U S Water, I'm sorry. And U S Water, Jake knows a lot about this, U S Water, they, they maintain the system right now. But until Bonapate is able to take it over, that corridor pays those bills, takes care of that, uh, that forty-seven thousand dollars, and helps move that along. But right now, like I said, the Bon, the city of Bonapate is not in place to take it over. Definitely won't have it by October first. So, there is a possibility that if we do fund it, you know, if they come in six months or come in five months, that there'll be a little bit of money to be paid back, I don't know. You know, there's still possibilities that, depending on how long it takes them to come in.
Well, if we just have it all planned in now, it'll be.
You can't hold off, you're gonna have to move forward in the budget to pay it because all these bills and stuff continually coming in from, from U S Water, from all these places.
Can we work on our own budget?
We would have to add it to the budget in our next Monday night meeting.
Can we work on it then, or?
No, because they're having a corridor meeting tomorrow, I have to, I have to come back with a, this is our quarterly meeting, I gotta come back with an answer on what we're gonna do. I'm a representative for this board on there, but your, for the, your other boards on, I respectfully want an answer to know what we need to do to move forward.
Well, that's what I'm saying, you're right now, if you ever wanna make a motion.
I'll be waiting, you guys, on me there.
Jay, have, have the board, have the board exist?
If you don't pay it, I'll see you.
Who?
Jake, right to the point.
They're beating it out of the rubbish. So.
Yeah, Jane's been, you know, she was a, but she done all the, she got took care of at all parts of, um, all the.
Worked here, she moved the corridor.
That's a decent, that's a decent seven thousand dollars, what she was doing over there.
Yeah.
See, she's come over here.
I guess the only option is, if you don't do nothing, I'll go back to him and tell him we're not doing anything, and I'll, I'll root myself off the board. If you guys wanna do something, make a motion and ask, and you can try to find the money or cut somewhere by the, by Monday night. I mean, that's the only other option you have.
Board, board willing to find the money.
You know what they don't do, they don't say, hey, where we gonna get money?
Mm-hmm.
Sheriff. Yes. What is this city of Bonapate, we know, last time I heard, they were looking at it similarly.
They are, and that's what we're waiting on, but see, what Evan said in that letter, and, and he explained that to me, they have to go back and change the grant with the state. So, the grant now, the grant recipient is a county. So the grant now, the grant recipient is a county. So when they assume responsibility, they gotta go back and change that with the, the Department of Revenue, with the Governor's Office, change that whole responsibility, change the, the US Water Works has to come out of it. They'll take some responsibility to the water sewer. There's a large process right there that has to be done. And it's just not a fluke of a switch, and that's what we're running into. We don't know how long that, how long that's gonna take. But in the meantime, these bills and all this stuff is coming in. So they're dependent on this money coming from Washington County and Holmes County.
I'm making a motion to go ahead, I don't want to sue the hundred and some thousand.
It'll probably be a little bit more than that. This account is one point three million.
Uh, we have a motion to forward, go ahead and, uh, and pay this.
Yes, well, they need to know where that money's gonna be.
Where you gonna take the motion from? Any motion?
I make a motion just a budgetary from another night, we budgeted, I mean...
Angie, I'm, Angie, I'm gonna try to turn in nineteen to twenty thousand, I don't mind, I'm gonna go toward any of that. I don't mind, I've saved it, I've been knowing what the budget, and I have pushed great by, really. Yeah. But you can take it out of that contingency.
All right, you, you made a motion into, can you motion to do it, Mr. Sheriff, to prove it?
I mean, I mean, that's better than, it's a, a problem, Rod, to, to... I second the motion.
I have a motion on forward, in a second, any discussion? Out of the way.
Yes.
Yes, yes.
No.
I wanna go get with Angie, then with Jeff, if that's okay, or the beat. We'll see where we might come from.
All right. All righty, uh, Clint, you had a couple of things.
Oh, yes.
On Commissioner.
Oh, attorney contract, I know, we, we brought up like the last three, four meetings about getting the contracts. We're currently, um, are not really under a first-type contract right now. Did you ever get a chance to get that put together, or?
Yeah, I've got one here, and it's, it's really not a contract because Dr. Fire, I mean, I don't want to, so there's no term. But, um, the only, I think, issue you're getting at is a flat rate versus billable hours.
Yeah.
I think you can, and, be honest with you, I, I'd love to go to billable hours if it, if it would cost more for the county, but, by now, I agree with David, under his code, to stay under a certain fee unless it's, there's some special project investigation around Phil T. Lassie or some type of, so really in the benefit of the county. And I believe we are willing to budget under attorney's fees for, for county services, so. But I've got one here, Clint, I'll give you. It's just a at-will, um, string of bags.
Straight, fast, or...
I've got just billable hours.
Billable hours.
Can, can we accept that, Mr. Porter?
Well, we can do whatever the board wants to. It's uncomfortable, billable hours, because he's gonna take it on fifteen-minute increments from week to all, or whatever the case may be. Or if he goes to a discrepancy with the county, such as anything to do with, with partners or getting RFQs, RFPs, that's where some of the building parts on K. K. S. reason, Mr. Stafford and I, we have worked out a great contract, but, whatever the board wants, it's way out of season. Angie, could you tell if this is in the billable hours, uh, do you please best at this?
I mean, shall we continue?
I, I've given all that information to the board, and the monthly invoices were found quite a bit after, uh, the attorney, like, two or three.
Let's get, we have a, they just keep it straight.
Yeah.
Well, I mean, that needs to be in his contract. I think what Mr. Eric said, he don't have a contract.
Yeah, no, I just wanna make sure there's a contract because he don't have one. So if you wanna go down to the, whatever it is now, and just put it in the contract, and let this board adopt it, if that's what they wanna do, we can.
All right. You just wanna bring that back to his statement?
I'll just change that paragraph, compensation for consultant services, paragraph four.
Okay, thank you.
All right.
Okay. Uh, county coordinator. So I didn't talk to David about this, and the reason why I didn't is because I forgot, so don't think I was trying to throw you under the bus in the last meeting. But I talked to Nate about this, um, I think, I think we need to, I think, to make things simpler. If there's money in the budget, and there's money associated with the project, and if it's an emergency situation or emergency, emergency something that has to be done, I think David needs to have the authority to do it despite anything else. All, all that amount? Anything. If there's a project in the budget, and if there's an emergency that has to be done, I think if it's deemed as an emergency and it's budgeted to be done and completed, anything. I mean, just say if there's an accident with a machine, something happened to the machine, you need to purchase a machine, it's in the budget from insurance to pay it and get the machine replaced, let him do it. Instead of keep coming back to the board over and over and over to try to get that done. If it's already budgeted and it's already in there, I think it's a good idea.
If it's already budgeted and a project approved by the board, we don't have to come to the board.
Okay, so explain to me why we keep talking about doggo legs down, like trying to get a motion and move forward with that?
Because that's in a project that's not on the budget.
It, it will be for next year's budget, Nate.
Yes, sir, it will be for next year.
I can do it, and y'all approve the base. Right.
I'm sorry.
I can do it if they approve the base.
Yes, sir, it's on the budget.
Because I know we talked about it in the last two, three meetings, and, you know, we run up here with problems and issues and conflicts, and, and, you know, and it just keeps dragging on and on. But if it's already in there, I just, you know, I think it needs to have, David has the authority to move forward with, with anything like that. It needs to be done, especially if it's, because after talking to water management and stuff, that, that project needs to be, we need to start moving forward with that, and I think...
Probably the board's on policy that it costs beyond a certain amount, Mr. Porter, can't.
Yeah, but we already went out, we already went out for RFQ and RFP on that, and I think we're still, John Feeney's, he ain't here no more, is he? Oh, there you are, I'm sorry. We've already went out for bid on that, correct? So all we're waiting on is to be approved, but we wouldn't need it approved if it's already budgeted and David can do it, is that correct? Is what you're saying, Angie?
I don't know.
Right, it is on the budget, October first is on the budget right now.
And you'll be able to do it.
Okay, without anything, okay. So I just wanted to make sure that I'm clarifying, if not, I want it in, in that purview over his job descriptions because some of these things just keep carrying on and on, and there's just nothing that's been done if it's already been budgeted.
Way out, always understood, Angie, correct me if I'm wrong. The board, when they adopt that budget, as long as I don't go outside of that budget.
Right, but if it meets a certain threshold, it has to go out for bid, the board has to...
Thirty thousand dollars is our cure. I have to get close, RFP, RQ, on anything above thirty thousand, I figure.
And the board awards the bid.
Yes.
Unless it's an emergency.
Unless it's an emergency. And then what I do, I come to the board and say, emergency, I think that's what he said, why I do that. It's just an emergency, is that right?
Yeah, yeah.
And the, the policy is, except...
Yeah.
What did he say, did you read that?
That's the one, it's too long to read, that'll be, what is it for you? Uh, I need to find what the emergency, that's a pretty much question.
Yeah, and if you just shorten that up to not policy, maybe, leave it to the discretion.
It's so programmed, I, they, we don't...
Yeah. But sure, a lot of things, not policy needs to be shortened, I bet that.
So, uh, you're satisfied with the, uh, the way he is, that he's got the...
Well, that's what Angie said, I just wanna clarify that because I know there's been things in the past, and I wanna make sure we do that.
All right. Board, have you anything else?
Yes, one more question, but you're, the young, if you and Clint use that lucky ticket, did y'all written one, did y'all written one?
Yeah, we did, no, we, we hired Mr. Adam to treat that service. Yeah, I was like one hundred, but we voted, we voted to use it continuing if you needed to do it out of your running that budget, so. I need to just contact him, because he did, he seemed like an hourly writer or something, was it?
He got fifteen wins?
Yeah, eighteen hundred bucks, he cleaned up all the lint on one seventy seven, eight and one seventy seven. So, so the semi did it.
In minutes, safety, and done it, yeah. He landed a traffic, you know?
Yeah, really good deal.
All right, you have a question, Sheriff?
Come in.